That is. We're ready? Okay, I'd like to call to order the November 22, 2022 reorganization meeting of the School Board of Seminole County. Our invocation and pledge of allegiance tonight is with member Abby Sanchez.
Good evening. Thank you so much for being here this evening. And right before the holidays of Thanksgiving, we have a lot to be thankful for. So I just want to reflect a little bit about all the fabulous things that we have to be thankful for. Our fabulous county that we live in, our wonderful school system that we are so proud to be a part of, and for each and every one of you, for everything that you do to help our schools, and for all the ones that are watching as well. We appreciate you and all of our hardworking teachers, faculty, cabinet, our superintendent, and of course, all of our fabulous board members, and of course, including two new board members that we're looking forward to working with. It's been difficult for the past few years, and a lot of people have had a lot of struggles, and lives have changed in so many different ways. But I just want to reflect on making sure that we refocus and calibrate on ourselves and make sure that we are balanced. And how important it is for us and our mental stability in order to help others, that it's important that we help ourselves as well. So at this time, I want us to remember that we are thankful for who we are, and in order to help others, we have to be stable ourselves. So thank you for everything that you do. Let's thank everybody else and be positive and work together. One quick thing that I always wanted to remind everybody is that we're a team. And usually, I'm one of those people that is with acronyms and everything like that, tend to be, I want to know exactly what the acronym means after being a classroom teacher for so long. Team in this form means together, everyone accomplishes more. So together, working together, we will accomplish a lot more. And no matter what our opinions are, no matter what views we have, we can agree to disagree, but we can lead by example. By listening to each other, helping each other, and making each other flourish. So on behalf of that and the rest of the board members, thank you again. I hope you and your family have a blessed Thanksgiving, a safe one, and a relaxing holiday. On that note, please stand for the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Let the record reflect that all school board members are present. Member Davis, member Garrick, member Kraus, member Sanchez, and member Pennick are all here. Also present are school board attorney, Carleen Cole Palmer, and board clerk Jill Moremas. Our first order of business is the swearing in of our newly and re-elected school board members, and we will start with member Davis. Judge Chase, if you would come to the front.
If you will repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the state of Florida that I am duly qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state and that I will well and faithfully perform the duties of a Seminole County school board member of which I am now about to enter.
And if there are any members of Ms. Davis's family and friends, please come up front for a picture. Member Garrick? And Judge Rex Seeler, if you would come to the front as well. Thank you.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government
the Constitution and government
of the United States
of the United States
and the state of Florida
and the state of Florida
and that I will well and faithfully perform
and that I will well and faithfully perform
I'm sorry, I messed up. That I will do, I'm duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
under the Constitution of this state
under the Constitution of this state
and that I will well and faithfully perform
and that I will well and faithfully perform
the duties of school board member
the duties of school board member
of which now I am about to enter
of which now I am about to enter
so help me God
so help me God. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. And member Kraus, you're up next. And I, we are aware that there are technical issues with the livestream on the audio. We are working on it.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support, protect, and defend
that I will support, protect, and defend
the Constitution and government
the Constitution and government
of the United States and the state of Florida
of the United States and the state of Florida
and that I am duly qualified to hold office
and that I am duly qualified to hold office
under the Constitution of this state
under the Constitution of this state
and that I will well and faithfully perform
and that I will well and faithfully perform
the duties of Seminole County school board member
the duties of Seminole County school board member
on which I am now about to enter
of which I am now about to enter
so help me God
so help me God.
Congratulations. Stand up.
Board members, our next item of business is the election of the school board chairman for 2022-2023. The floor is now open for nominations for chairman. Seconds are not needed. You may self-nominate.
Madam Superintendent, it would be my honor to serve our district. Therefore, I'm nominating myself as chair.
Madam Superintendent, I also would be honored to nominate myself. Thank you.
Are there any additional nominations? Hearing no additional nominations, the floor for the chairman is now closed by roll call vote by the clerk. And the roll call will be as follows. Davis, Garrick, Kraus, Sanchez, Pennick. Please announce the name of the member who you favor as chairman. Madam Clerk? The two members are member Christine Kraus and member Abby Sanchez.
Thank you. Member Davis. Oh, you, turn your mic on and speak right into the mic.
There's a green button.
Sorry. We didn't cover this in orientation. My apologies.
And I'm like Christine Kraus. Did it go yet?
It's not going through.
Okay. Christine Kraus. And member Davis voted for Christine Kraus. Thank you. I'll just repeat. Gotcha. Member Garrick?
Christine Kraus.
Member Kraus?
Christine Kraus. Myself.
Member Sanchez?
Abby Sanchez.
Member Pennick?
Abby Sanchez.
By a vote of three to two, member Christine Kraus has been elected as school board chairman.
The next, the next matter of business is the election of school board vice chairman for 2022-2023. The floor is now open for nominations for vice chairman. Seconds are not needed. You may self-nominate.
Superintendent, it would be my honor to nominate Ms. Abby Sanchez as vice chair.
Are there any additional nominations for vice chairman? Hearing none, all those in favor of member Abby Sanchez as vice chairman, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Member Abby Sanchez is elected vice chairman by a unanimous vote. And at this time, I'd like to take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Takes, she takes order of her now, though.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Um, you want to do that now? Yeah, yep, okay. We're going to preemptively just move this in here.
Preemptively. Oh, good.
Calling the reorganization meeting back to order. It is now my honor to pass the gavel and turn the meeting over to Chairman Kraus.
Thank you, Superintendent. Superintendent, do you have any new business recommendations?
Yes, Chairman, I do. And it's that the School Board of Seminole County appoint Sarita Beaman as board secretary, Jill Moremas as board agency clerk, Grace Gonzalez as deputy clerk, and Carleen Cole Palmer as board parliamentarian for 2022-2023.
Motion. Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Superintendent, do you have another new business recommendation?
Yes, I do. And it's that the School Board of Seminole County approve the board calendars for 2022-2023.
Is there, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry. Aye, or aye. Aye, aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Superintendent, do you have another new business recommendation?
Yes, it's that the School Board of Seminole County reaffirm its Code of Boardsmanship Resolution 1997-10.
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Seeing no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned. But stay put because we're going to have the leasing corporation meeting right after. So this meeting is adjourned at 6:00 PM.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Okay. Shall we go ahead? Okay, I'd like to go ahead and, and call to order the November 22, 2022 annual
Order, please.
reorganization of the Seminole School Board Leasing Corporation meeting. Please let the record reflect that all five school board members are present. Member Pennick, Vice Chair Sanchez, member Garrick, and member Davis, as well as Superintendent Sarita Beaman and School Board Attorney Carleen Cole Palmer, as well as the School Board Clerk Jill Moremas. School board members, have you had an opportunity to review the leasing corp minutes from April 5, 2022?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any objections or corrections to the minutes?
No, ma'am.
Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The minutes are approved as written. And Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, it's that the Seminole School Board Leasing Corporation established the newly elected school board chairman and vice chairman as the leasing corporation president and vice president respect, respectively.
Is there a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Thank you. The motion passes. And seeing no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here this evening.
Yes, congratulations. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Please be safe and have a great one.